Close the back doors, please. Sergeants, close the back doors, please. Quiet on the floor, please. Quiet on the floor, please. Guys, guys. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, please place all electronic devices, all electronic devices to vibrate. Madam Majority Leader.
Good afternoon and welcome to the stated meeting of September 12th, 2024. I am Majority Leader Amanda Farias, and I'd like to thank you for joining us. If you would like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on our website. On behalf of the body today, I welcome the members of the public who have joined us. During stated meetings, only members of the council may speak. Members of the public shall remain silent. If you wish to express your support of any remarks, you may make the silent approval gesture. I want to remind my colleagues that a quorum is to be respected at all times. Insulting each other is not appropriate. All remarks are to be addressed to the chair, and members shall not speak unless recognized by the chair. It is essential that even if we disagree, we treat each other with respect.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Roll call.
Abreu.
Present.
Ariola.
Present.
Aviles.
Presente.
Ayala.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Bacher.
Present.
Brannan.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers.
Present.
Caban.
Present.
Carr. De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Here.
Felice. Gennaro.
Here.
Gutierrez.
Presente.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks. Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Present.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Marmarato.
Present.
Marte.
Here.
Mealy. Menon.
Here.
Moya.
Here.
Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse.
Here.
Osay.
Present.
Palladino. Powers.
Present.
Wrestler.
Here.
Riley.
Present.
Rivera. Salam.
Present.
Salamanca. Sanchez.
Present.
Shulman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung.
Present.
Vernikoff. Williams.
Present.
Wan.
Present.
Jaeger.
Here.
Juang. Councilmember Juang.
Here.
Borelli. Farias.
Present.
Palladino. Speaker Adams.
Present.
Thank you. We will now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Pastor Louis Straker of Reflections Church, which is located at 1078 Utica Avenue in Brooklyn.
Madam Speaker, the Honorable Adrian Adams, Majority Leader Farias, to our illustrious council member of the 45th District of New York City, Farah Lewis, thank you for your gracious invitation to deliver the invocation before this body in our city's council chambers. It is with great honor I stand before you on this historic day as you deliberate on the passage of this most significant legislation that serves as a milestone towards restoring opportunity for those who have been disadvantaged and disenfranchised, and to create a hollowed space for peace, conversation, and inclusion. Let us all pray. Most gracious Lord and our Heavenly Father, we humbly beseech your throne of grace and mercy as we invoke your presence with us today. We ask that your spirit would descend upon us in this chamber and give guidance to the hearts and the minds of those whom you have sovereignly chosen to represent the people of this great city. Grant them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to govern over the affairs of your people and the complexities that we face in our ever-changing world. Give to them the insight of the sons of Izakar that they may be able to discern the times and seasons in which we live and respond justly with grace and mercy and walk humbly before you, who is the Creator and Sustainer of all life. I command a blessing upon every elected official assembled here today. As these great men and women commence on this afternoon session, may your justice roll down in these chambers like waters and your righteousness like an ever-flowing stream. I ask that you bind them together in the power of unity and the sacrificial love exemplified by your Son, the greatest representative of all humanity. It is in his mighty and matchless name that I humbly make these requests and petitions known with respect and acknowledgement of all faith traditions present here today. I pray this in the precious name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Thank you. I would now ask Councilmember Farah Lewis to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Good afternoon. I'm honored to host with you all a distinguished and outstanding community leader, clergyman, and activist for my district in central Brooklyn today. Pastor Louis Hilton Striker is a native New Yorker and the proud son of former Deputy Prime Minister of St. Vincent and the Grenadines and Minister of Foreign Affairs, Trade, and Commerce, Honorable Sir Louis Hilton Striker Senior and Lady Linda Striker. After spending the first five years of his life raised in his hometown of Port, Spain, Trinidad, Pastor Striker began his formal education and is a byproduct of the New York City Public School and CUNY system. Raised in the church his entire life, he is currently the founder and lead pastor of Reflections Church in Utica Avenue in Brooklyn. Through his leadership, this ministry is the heart of East Flatbush and has grown substantially, touching the lives of hundreds of people who have been enriched by the powerful sermon and empowered through the numerous community programs that he leads, designs, and enhances the lives of young people in our community and beyond. Beyond his church, which he serves as a steadfast community institution in my district, Pastor Striker is an active member and serves as the chairman of the board for the Six Seven Clergy Council, also known as the God Squad, an influential clergy-led anti-gun violence organization in Brooklyn. In addition, he also serves as the advisory council for one of the flagship projects in my district, the Shirley Chisholm Recreation Center, and is a proud member of the Mayor's Caribbean Advisory Council. I now spread... Yeah, across the record, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. We will now have the adoption of minutes by Councilmember Joanne Ariola.
I'd like to make a motion that the minutes of the stated meeting of August 15th, 2024 be adopted as printed.
Messages and papers from the mayor?
M-66, withdrawal of Corporation Council appointment.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed. Communication from city, county, and borough offices?
None.
Petitions and communications?
None.
Land use call-ups?
M-67 through M-70, various applications.
Coupled on call-up vote, I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on today's land use call-ups.
Abreu.
Aye.
Ariola.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Thank you. Bacher.
Aye.
Brannan.
Aye.
Brewer.
Yes.
Brooks Powers.
Permission to vote on all items on today's agenda?
Permission granted.
I vote aye on all, thank you.
Caban.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye on all.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Felice. Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks. Holden.
Aye.
Hudson.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Lee, as you're, you know.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marmarato.
Aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Mealy. Menon.
Aye.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Aye.
Thank you. Nurse.
I vote aye.
Osay.
Aye.
Palladino.
Aye.
Powers.
Aye.
Wrestler.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera. Salam.
I vote aye.
Salamanca.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Shulman.
Aye.
Stevens. Ung.
Aye.
Vernikoff.
Aye.
Thank you. Williams.
I vote aye.
Wan.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Juang.
Aye.
Borelli. Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Speaker Adams.
I vote aye.
Today's land use call-ups are adopted by a vote of 44 in the affirmative and zero in the negative. We will now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you so much, Madam Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. Before we begin, I want to start with a special remembrance of a beloved member of our council family and this city, Carlos Carino. Carlos served the City of New York as council staff for 25 years. He worked for every speaker in the city's history and was the heart of our Community Engagement Division, most recently as co-director of the Community Outreach Unit. Carlos's passion for community shone through in everything he did. He mentored countless public servants and taught people to care for this city, its diverse communities, and people in the way he knew best. Whether he was promoting IDNYC or volunteering to provide New York City's annual estimate of unhoused New Yorkers, Carlos sought to make sure everyone was counted, because for Carlos, everyone did. When New Yorkers traveled to Carlos's beloved Puerto Rico for Somos, he seized the opportunity to help organize the council's volunteer cleanup efforts because he was so proud of his roots and his birthplace. Carlos lived by the code that we should strive to leave a place better than we found it, and he always did. He was known to soften a tough day and brighten the good ones with a reminder of our purpose, not just our role, but of our duty to New Yorkers. His work made it possible for our neighbors to live a good life in our great city. Carlos sparked a light in each of us and made us smile. In his memory, we carry his enduring light forward. And for my own personal note, as I noted at his memorial, Carlos was that go-to guy where you looked in a room and said, "There you are again." And when you said that, there was his smile. There was his warmth, and there was his love. There was his passion and his heart for the work that he did for this council for over 25 years and the work that he did for the people of the City of New York. We will always remember him with love and with light. Our hearts are with his siblings, Willie and Marilyn, Lily, Bruni, and Ada. And on November 18th, we will be holding the council's Puerto Rican Heritage Celebration in the chambers right here in Carlos's honor. The celebration will be co-hosted by Councilmember Alexa Aviles, who was a dear, dear friend to Carlos, and I invite everyone to attend. On September 1st, Hersh Goldberg Poland's parents braved the unimaginable and laid their beautiful, beloved son to rest. No parent should have to bear the weight of burying their child. Hersh and the other five hostages killed by Hamas should never have been taken in the first place. The impact of the ongoing violence in Palestine and Israel has reverberated through our own communities, carrying unimaginable grief and trauma. Too many lives have been lost. We must work together to protect civilian life, bring all hostages home, and end the cycle of violence that continues to tear families apart. On September 2nd, a gunman shot into the crowd at the West Indian Day Parade, harming five New Yorkers, leaving one dead. My thoughts are with the victim, Denzel Chan and his family, who are grieving this tragic loss. It's incumbent on us to come together in the fight against gun violence so that our communities can truly be safe. Last week, we lost a resident to a tragic basement fire in Councilmember Shulman's district. He was remembered as a loving grandfather and father who helped raise two of his grandchildren. Yesterday, we observe the 23rd anniversary of September 11th, and as a native New Yorker, I personally can still recall the experience of shock and pain of that day, which forever altered our city and nation. We honor the memories of the innocent lives that we lost and acknowledge the ongoing grief of their loved ones. As one who walked down Second Avenue feeling shell-shocked on September 11th, I can tell you that trauma comes back every September 11th for me, wondering how I was going to get from midtown Manhattan back to Queens and how it happened when I finally got there. Looking back over my right shoulder and seeing the towers that we treasured burning to the ground, the trauma never goes away as a New Yorker, if we saw it, if we lived it, and if we breathed in those toxins. We must also continue to pay tribute to the heroes who ran towards danger to save lives, including the first responders, rescue workers, and everyday New Yorkers. Many are still suffering from life-threatening illnesses after being exposed to toxins that led to negative health impacts. We must renew our commitment to all who continue to be affected by mental and physical consequences of this tragedy by ensuring they receive the care, recognition, and the information they deserve. Through this commitment and action, we can honor their sacrifice and continue towards healing. Last Sunday, we celebrated Labor Day, honoring the labor movements and leaders who fought for so many of the benefits we enjoy in the workplace today, from paid sick leave to the 40-hour work week. As the daughter of two longtime union workers, I was raised to value organized labor, and I saw what's possible when we work together to win our collective rights. As we honor this history, we must recognize the ongoing fights for fair wages, safer workplaces, improved benefits, and the right of all workers to organize without fear of retaliation. These are essential protections that workers deserve and a priority for this city council. On September 2nd, we also celebrated the Independence Day of Vietnam, and September 7th marked Brazil Independence Day. The 15th marks the start of Hispanic Heritage Month, when we uplift the contributions and achievements of Latino communities across the country. New York City is home to 2.5 million Latino residents of diverse backgrounds, cultures, and traditions. We also recognize the groundbreaking Latino leaders in this body who continue to serve this city with passion and dedication to their communities. I also want to wish a Happy Independence Day to our Costa Rican, Honduran, Salvadoran, and Guatemalan communities who are celebrating on September 15th, as well as a Happy Mexican Independence Day on the 16th, Chile Independence Day on the 18th, and Belize Independence Day on the 21st. September 17th marks the start of the Mid-Autumn Festival, a traditional festival celebrated in China according to the lunar calendar. Countries across Asia that also observe the lunar calendar are celebrating their own holidays, including Chusuk, which is South Korea's Thanksgiving, and Sukimi, which is Japan's version of the Mid-Autumn Festival. Have a happy and healthy celebration. Somebody's already started celebrating back there. Good for you. September is Suicide Prevention Month. As our city continues to grapple with our mental health crisis, it's important that New Yorkers know where to go for support and treatment. As a council, we will continue to work to secure the resources our communities need. NYC Well counselors are available 24/7 in over 200 languages. Know that you can always call 888-NYC-WELL or 988... The Suicide and Crisis Lifeline for help. September is also National Sickle Cell Awareness Month. Sickle cell disease is the most common inherited blood disorder in the United States and disproportionately affects African Americans. The council has been active on this front in enacting important legislation to create guidance to educate medical professionals and the public on detecting and managing sickle cell disease. Earlier this year, we enacted a bill to require reporting on sickle cell disease for DOE students so we can provide better health outcomes for our students. This Sunday is the 55th Annual African American Day Parade in Harlem. Please join us as we celebrate the indelible contributions of our African American community here in New York City and across our country. Finally, please join me in wishing a happy birthday to Councilmember Camila Hanks, whose birthday was on the 4th. Councilmember Gail Brewer, whose birthday was on the 6th, and that's also the birthday of Tanisha Edwards. Councilmember Sandra Ung, who celebrated on the 9th. And Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez, whose birthday is Sunday. Happy birthday. Now let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following land use items. We are approving three landmark preservation commission designations. The Hexer Building, now the Crown Building, as a historic landmark in Councilmember Powers District. The Hexer Building is one of Fifth Avenue's best-known and most visible early skyscrapers. It is one of the earliest surviving skyscrapers that was built to conform with the 1916 zoning resolution, which required higher stories of tall buildings to taper increased light and air to the street below. The interior of the Temple Court Building atrium, now the Beekman Hotel, as a historic landmark in Councilmember Marte's district. The atrium is a unique full-height, skylit atrium in the city's earliest remaining tall, fireproof office building. Restored in the 2016 conversion of the Temple Court Building to the Beekman Hotel, the atrium boasts eight levels of historic galleries and intricately designed ironwork, arch doors, and windows. The Frederick Douglass Memorial Park as a historic landmark in Councilmember Carr's district. Frederick Douglass Memorial Park is the city's only existing non-sectarian cemetery built by and for African Americans. Open during a time of widespread racial discrimination, this cemetery provided dignified burials for African Americans as an alternative to the substandard burials permitted at colonial-era white-constructed cemeteries. Next, we'll vote on the following finance items. A transparency resolution approving new designations and changes of certain organizations receiving funding in the expense budget. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannan establishing a new 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for four buildings in Councilmember De La Rosa's district. Introduction 898, sponsored by Councilmembers Sandy Nurse and Shana Abreu, which would create the Cypress Hills Fulton Business Improvement District. Introduction 906, sponsored by Councilmember Julie Wan, which would expand the existing Queens Plaza Court Square Business Improvement District and rename it the Long Island City Business Improvement District. Today, we will also vote on the following pieces of legislation. Resolution 438, sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, would recognize Landing Day in the second week of September annually to commemorate the arrival of the first Jewish community in New Amsterdam in 1654 and to celebrate the continuing importance of the Jewish community in the City of New York. Thank you to our staff member Regina Paul. Introduction 746A, sponsored by Councilmember Oswald Felice, would require the Department of Transportation in collaboration with the Departments of Parks and Recreation and the Department of Environmental Protection to improve paved medians by planting vegetation or adding stormwater management infrastructure. The bill would also require DOT to report on its efforts to make such improvements. We thank our staff member Mark Chen. Next, we will be voting on two bills that will bolster support for fire emergency victims. Introduction 89, sponsored by Councilmember Pirina Sanchez, would require an agency designated by the mayor to provide notice to council members of certain serious fires located within their districts. These notifications would need to be sent within three hours of the fire department's deployment to the scene of the fire and contain specific information relating to the incident. Thank you to our staff members David Seitzer, Josh Kingsley, and William Hangash. And Introduction 6A, sponsored by Councilmember Alexa Aviles, would require the Department of Housing Preservation and Development in consultation with the Fire Department and Department of Buildings to develop procedures to ensure that occupants of multiple dwellings receive relevant information in connection with the issuance of residential vacate orders following fires. This bill would require HPD to designate a person on site to distribute relevant materials to occupants of the building, inform occupants of their rights and their landlord's responsibilities, and provide information in the designated citywide languages on where occupants can find additional resources. Thank you to our staff member Taylor Zilani. Finally, we will be voting on a package of bills from the Committee on Civil and Human Rights to acknowledge, study, and address the legacy of slavery and racial injustices that are at a result in New York City. The legacy of slavery and systemic racism has impacted all facets of our society today, from housing and education to our physical, mental, and economic health. It's important that our city not just recognize these longstanding injustices inflicted on Black New Yorkers and communities, but that we take steps to redress these harms through potential remedies. As the first Black speaker leading the most diverse city council in our city's history, we've been intentional about confronting historic inequities perpetrated by systemic racism, disinvestment, and policies. We've advanced legislative solutions to create a more diverse municipal workforce. We've advanced legislative solutions to create a more diverse municipal workforce, address racial disparities in maternal and birthing health, address disproportionate harms related to public safety, expand opportunities for MWBS, and much more. We've also supported the work of the Racial Justice Commission, the New York City Commission on Racial Equity, and policy changes it produced by voter approval of ballot initiatives. Today's package of legislation, which will be coordinated with the New York State Community Commission on Reparations Remedies, marks the next step to advancing racial justice and equity in our city. It is what our city and communities deserve. We need honesty and understanding the historical legacy of slavery in New York City and its impact on New Yorkers, as well as a path towards healing, reconciliation, and repair. This council is proud to advance these efforts. Introduction 833A, sponsored by public advocate Jomani Williams, would require the Department of Transportation to facilitate the installation and maintenance of an informational sign near the intersection of Wall and Pearl Streets in Manhattan to mark the site of New York's first slave market. Thank you to our staff member Jessica Boulay. Introduction 471A, sponsored by Councilmember Nantasha Williams, would establish a task force to consider the creation of a citywide New York City Freedom Trail and a Lower Manhattan Freedom Trail. The task force would be required to submit a report of its recommendations to the mayor and council no later than one year after the task force is first convened. Thank you to our staff members Declan McPherson and Jessica Boulay. Introduction 279A, sponsored by Councilmember Farrah Lewis, would require COR to work with subject matter experts to study the historical and present-day role of New York City government in perpetrating or perpetuating slavery and related racial injustices, and to consider reparative measures for such injustices. The reparations study would document the harms of slavery and its legacies in the city, identify associated rights violations, and recommend potential legal, policy, and other measures to help remedy or redress associated harms. The study would also propose eligibility criteria for receiving reparations. COR would coordinate with the New York State Community Commission on Reparations Remedies. Thank you to our staff members Jessica Boulay and William Diore. And Introduction 242A, sponsored by Councilmember Crystal Hudson, would require the Commission on Racial Equity or COR to establish a truth-healing and reconciliation process in connection with the city's historic involvement in slavery and its present-day legacies. The objectives would be to establish facts about slavery in New York City and its ongoing legacies, protect and acknowledge affected persons and communities, and recommend changes for government and institutions to prevent recurrence and perpetuation of harm. Thank you to our staff members Jessica Boulay and William Diore. Thank you for your attention. Now I turn it back over to our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We will now move into discussion of general orders. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Lewis, followed by Hudson, then Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader, and good afternoon, colleagues. Today marks a pivotal moment in our city's history with the passage of Intro 279, a bill that mandates a comprehensive study on reparations as part of a major legislative package with my colleagues Councilmembers Williams and Hudson, related to slavery and its enduring legacies in our city. Throughout my tenure in the city council, we have heard countless testimonies revealing the ongoing impacts of persistent disparities affecting our Black and Brown residents. Past harms continue to resonate today, manifesting in systemic inequalities that disadvantaged Black and Brown people, especially Black and Brown women, in both public and private sectors. The reparations movement is often misunderstood as merely a call for compensation, but it is far more than that. Enslavement and its aftermath evolved into systemic forms of oppression that continue to impact lives today, including redlining, environmental racism, and underfunded services in predominantly Black neighborhoods. With Intro 279, we are taking a bold step to confront these issues head-on. The study conducted by COR in consultation with the Mayor's Office of Equity and Racial Justice, as well as the New York State Commission on Reparations, will document and quantify the impacts of enslavement, oppression, and discrimination, and recommend concrete reparative measures. This is not just an acknowledgement of the past, it is about rectifying the present and building a better future. I want to thank Speaker Adams, Committee Counsel Jessica Boulay for their support, as well as Linda Tijani from COR, Councilmember Williams, also Chair Williams, for her leadership to get this bill to the finish line. Let this be a call to action for us all to continue to fight for justice and equity together. I encourage my colleagues to vote for Intro 279, 242, 471A, and 833A. Thank you.
I'd now like to recognize Councilmember Hudson, followed by Sanchez, and then Public Advocate Williams.
Thank you. And just before I get into my formal remarks, I just want to acknowledge the passing of Denzel Chan, who was a constituent of Councilmember Lewis's but was very unfortunately--
Councilmember, that portion should be spoken about during general discussion.
Okay. I'll just go to my--
Thank you.
--remarks. Thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on Intro 242A, which the council is voting on today. It should be no surprise that our city is still reckoning with the long shadow cast by the enslavement of African and Indigenous American people and its enduring impact on Black Americans. Since slavery was banned in New York in 1827, our city still generated significant income from the illegal trade of enslaved people, and Black New Yorkers continue to experience racially motivated discrimination, riots, segregation, and violence, and these practices continue to this day. Black New Yorkers are eight times more likely to be stopped by the police under suspicion of a crime because of nothing more than the color of their skin. Black homeowners in previously redlined neighborhoods are preyed upon by real estate speculators looking to trick them into signing away their homes, commonly known as deed theft. New York City must confront these injustices head-on and prioritize the needs of its Black residents to forge a path toward genuine equity and healing. My Black Agenda for New York City, originally published in 2021, includes a comprehensive citywide truth-healing and reconciliation process to acknowledge the breadth of the historical mistreatment of Black New Yorkers and confront the city's racist practices. I'm proud that the passage of Intro 242A will make this a reality, and by passing 242A alongside Intro 279A, introduced by Councilmembers Lewis and Williams, and a number of other bills, the city council underscores its commitment to confronting and acknowledging the destructive racist policies that have harmed Black communities. I look forward to continuing to work alongside my colleagues in the council to dismantle the generations of systemic and structural anti-Black racism ingrained in our city, and I urge all my colleagues to vote aye. Thank you.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Displacement following a fire or structural emergency in your home is one of the most disruptive experiences a family can have. Imagine running for your life, barely remembering to grab shoes, probably insufficient clothing, and certainly not identifying information in your wallet, only to stand or sit on your sidewalk for hours looking up, not being sure what is next. This happens over 2,000 times per year across the city of New York. In New York City, we thankfully have some processes designed to help New Yorkers through these destabilizing times. Gratitude first to our first responders who risked their lives to pull us out of fires and emergency conditions. The American Red Cross, per contract with HPD, who visits fire and other emergency sites to help residents with emergency shelter and provisions in certain circumstances. And our agencies, from emergency management to buildings to housing preservation and FDNY again, who each have different roles to ensure buildings are safe and that there is some degree of inter-agency coordination. Yet for all that New Yorkers have, we can and must do better. On dozens of occasions, my office, me, myself, have visited fire sites, we all have, as colleagues, discovering issues. Buildings or HPD didn't issue a vacate order where they should have. Apartment being dwelled in with no windows in the middle of winter, as an example. American Red Cross not being notified, and residents left in limbo. And that brings me to Intro 89. Intro 89 would provide councilmembers and other key public officials, including community boards, with notifications when a fire occurs in their district within three hours of FDNY's initial response. This is important because we're creating infrastructure to stabilize New Yorkers and their families after a fire event that is redundant and that gives us the opportunity to catch any mistakes or any gaps that were left behind by agencies. This is personal for me, as my own family was displaced in a fire when I was just three years old, left with nowhere to go and no one to turn to except for the flames of what had been our home. I hope you join me in voting aye. Thank you.
I'd now like to recognize Public Advocate Williams, followed by Councilmember Williams, followed by De La Rosa.
Thank you so much, and thank you so much to Speaker Adams, Chair Williams, and members of the council for allowing me the opportunity to speak and support of this bill. During today's stated meeting, asking my colleagues to support my bill Intro 833A, which would ensure that a sign is placed at Pearl and Wall Street, the location of the first slave trade in 1711. The sign will also include an inscription that describes the role of the slave market in the city's economy, the role of the city's government in establishing the market, and the use of the market in the sale of African and Indigenous persons. I first introduced this bill in 2014 when I was a member in this body, but the legislation never came to a vote. The administration at the time placed a sign in Manhattan Park on the corner of Wall and Water Street. It has been ten years since it was installed, and while I am grateful that a sign was placed conveying our history, it is not at the current location. In 2022, two of my staffers went to the intersection of Water and Wall Street to see the sign. They encountered a senior citizen standing in front of the place they were told when they saw a documentary on the New York slave trade on Manhattan Network. She went searching for the sign on three separate occasions and found it that day. She had been looking at the correct location where there was no sign. The wealth of America was born from the violence and greed of human chattel slavery. The Emancipation Proclamation, along with the passage of the Thirteenth Amendment in 1865, began to dismantle the institution of chattel slavery in America, but inequity and resources hardly ended there. From the adoption of the Black Code during the Reconstruction, to the implementation of Jim Crow laws, to the fight against the living minimum wage, we can directly see the ways this violence and deliberate exclusion from economic safety has provided prosperity to our city today. At this very moment, Louisiana, New Hampshire, and Tennessee, and others, introduce legislation to not teach this history. It is critical that people see the connection between what is happening today and what happened at this market. Enslaved Africans were emancipated on paper but shared no part of the wealth, land and the institutions their labor had financed and created. These structures have never been adequately addressed. We sometimes talk about the enslavement in America as just part of our past, but communities still feel the crippling generational effects of the brutal violence that built the wealth of the financial institutions located on Wall Street. Passing the legislation will allow this city to acknowledge the enslaved women and children and pay our respects to their descendants. I would like to thank those who worked on the bill, Kay Bain, my legislative director in 2014, and historian Christopher Cobb, who's present here today--
Public Advocate, your time has--
--and my staff. Can I ask to sign on to Intro 279, 242, 488 as well?
Thank you, Public Advocate. I'd now like to recognize Councilmember Williams, followed by De La Rosa, Aviles, and Feliz.
Thank you so much, Majority Leader. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm filled with a profound sense of pride and purpose in this Juneteenth package of bills. We already passed two. Today, we are passing four, and we have one more left to go. These bills were designed to honor the legacy of those who fought for freedom and continue the crucial work of rectifying historical injustices and empowering affected communities through much-needed restitution. This momentous legislative effort demonstrates the New York City Council's commitment to addressing systematic racism and working toward lasting justice for all. We gather not to just discuss legislation, but to address a shared commitment, a commitment to truth, to justice, and to healing. The bills we are here to support are about much more than politics. They are about recognizing our history, understanding its deep and lasting impacts, and working together to chart a pathway forward. For over 200 years, the city of New York, like so much of this country, was built on the backs of enslaved Africans and Indigenous peoples. It is an ugly truth, one that for too long, many have been hesitant to confront. But today, through the actions of the New York City Council, under the leadership of Speaker Adrian Adams, we are taking steps to confront this history head-on. Four pieces of legislation: truth-healing and reconciliation process, a study of reparations, a Freedom Trail Task Force, and a marker at the site of New York's first slave market. Each of these pieces of legislation is a reflection of the values we hold dear, justice, equity, and community. In my very short time that I have left here, I just want to thank the administration, Linda Tijani, Chair and Executive Director of the Commission on Racial Equity, Andrea, Jeff, Jessica, William, my staff, for their tireless efforts. And as we leave here today, I encourage each of you to take the lessons from these bills into your own communities, speak the truth, engage in the hard conversations, and remember that healing is a journey, and it's a journey we are on together. Thank you.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember De La Rosa, followed by Aviles, then Feliz.
Thank you so much, Majority Leader. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Speaker Adams, Finance Chair, Justin Brennan, the land use staff, as well as the finance staff, and ask my colleagues to support pre-considered land use item 142 and the accompanying resolution 570. Given the ongoing housing crisis and the increasing need for affordable housing and the preservation of affordable housing, we are pleased today to advance an Article 11 process for the Rachel Bridge HDFC buildings in my district, 960 units of housing that will be preserved for an additional 40 years. This initiative will involve maintaining an open line of communications with tenants and management. I am specifically proud of the work that my team has done as we held a community town hall on this particular item to ensure that tenants' voices were heard. This Article 11 process will provide tax incentives for the rehabilitation of the Rachel Bridge apartments and ensure that residents can remain in rent-stabilized units. This Article 11 will provide for the Rachel Bridge to do rehab work that is needed on vacant units, but in addition, it will set aside 96 units, 10% of the units to be set aside for formerly homeless tenants. And the tiers of AMI are, in my opinion, in line with the affordability needs of my district. The scope of work that we will provide for this Article 11 will include facade repairs, window replacements, balcony railing repairs, and much more, including an assessment of the aging tenant population in these units that will be able to have accommodations made for them. If not with this Article 11, it would be basically impossible to maintain this large development in my district, and I want to thank the council staff for their hard work on this, HPD, as well as the management company for coming to the table for our community. I ask my colleagues to support it. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Aviles, followed by Feliz.
First, I'd like to start by thanking the Speaker, the Chair Sanchez, legislative staff, HPD, for their work on Intro 6. This legislation is especially important to me because it comes directly from the lived experience of residents in my district who have been impacted by fires, many of whom are non-English-speaking. Unfortunately for this vulnerable population, experiencing a fire while already traumatizing experience may prove doubly challenging. In some cases, families are being prevented from returning to their apartments by their landlord and are unaware of their right to return to apartments, leaving some reassigned to complete displacement and/or loss of their possessions. This bill, Intro 6, will close the information gap through a very simple education process, which would be available in the top 10 most commonly spoken languages in our city, allowing families and New Yorkers to have a better chance at recouping their livelihood in the aftermath of a devastating fire. This is one of many steps to come that we are moving in the right direction to continuously and comprehensively protect and support New Yorkers who are experiencing such a trauma. We have much more work to do. I want to thank my staff member Christina Botego and all my colleagues for your support on this legislation and for supporting New Yorkers across this city in dealing with the trauma of experiencing fires and displacement. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Feliz.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Very proud of the many bills that we're passing today, including my bill, Operation Green NYC, a bill which will make New York City greener and will help resolve challenges that we have by requiring that paved street medians be converted into green infrastructure, including trees, vegetation, and other stormwater infrastructure. This gratification will easily achieve millions of benefits in the communities that need them the most, including helping clean out the air that we breathe, including improving quality of life by reducing noise pollution, beautifying communities and making them more attractive for those that live there, work there, shop there, improving mental health, and even helping us prepare for the environmental threats that we face, including those related to flooding. Unfortunately, low-income communities have had the least amount of access to green spaces, spaces that are important to our mental and physical well-being. You can easily see the tale of two cities idea by just looking at our medians. When I drive around wealthy communities, generally the medians are so improved that no more green would fit in them. When I get back to the Bronx or other low-income areas, generally these street medians have nothing but asphalt. Lack of greenery has been harmful to our communities. There's a region in the South Bronx that's called Asma Alley. That's how much air pollution there is due to many reasons, including the lack of green. We need to tackle this issue through every angle possible, including by greenifying our city. We need to make sure that we create communities that work for everybody. I want to thank Speaker Adams for helping get this bill to the finish line. Also, I want to thank all colleagues, including the prime co-sponsors, Councilmember Krishnan, Aviles, Nurse, Banks, and Ressler. I look forward to seeing all the positive results that it's going to bring to the city of New York. We're not only asking for equity, we've been asking for equity for a long time. We're requiring equity. Thank you so much.
Seeing no one else-- Seeing no one else signed up, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Gennaro.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. I just want to speak on Intro 242A, 279, 471, A33. I just want to go back to what the voters did in 2022 when they approved by a margin, you know, by ballot referendum of 70 to 30, the creation of the Commission on Racial Equality. This is what it said. "There should be established a Commission on Racial Equity..." Oh, no, it's the Commission on Racial Equity. "There should be established a Commission on Racial Equity, the purpose of which is to enable community members with equity experience or lived experience relevant to the goal of equity to propose priorities for racial equity in city decision-making and policy and assess performance towards those priorities." Very nice, but a little bit, a little bit vague, quite frankly. And so, so the council comes along, as it well should, to give more context and texture and to really drill down on what the voters voted for overwhelmingly in 2002. To me, this is what these bills represent. No one should be afraid of a conversation. No one should be afraid of a dialogue, you know, colloquy, a diverse commission or diverse task force that'll work very closely with Core. We have our own Pesak Osina, who was one of the commissioners for Core, so this is a very, you know, diverse group of people that are going to look at something that desperately needs to be looked at. And I support these bills, and this is what the people asked for very appropriately in 2002. We're delivering on that. We're making it better. We're taking this, expanding it, giving it more context and texture, and I thank the Speaker and everyone involved in bringing this forward. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no one else signed up to speak. Report of special committees?
None.
Reports of standing committees?
Report of the Committee on Civil and Human Rights, Intros 242A and 279A, Study of Reparations and Reconciliation in Relation to Slavery.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 471A, Freedom Trail Task Force.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 833A, informational sign near New York's first slave market.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance, Intros 898 and 906, Business Improvement Districts.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered Reso 559, Organization Funding.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered LU 142 and Reso 570, Tax Exemption.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Fire and Emergency Management, Intro 89A, Fire Department Notifications.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Housing and Buildings, Intro 6A, Residential Vacate Orders.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU 108 and Reso 571 through LU 131 and Reso 573, Landmark Designations.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, Intro 346A, Pedestrian Crossing Guidelines.
Amended and laid over.
Intro 746A, Stormwater Management.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
General Orders Calendar, Resolution Appointing Various Persons, Commissioner of Deeds.
Coupled on general orders, I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on the items coupled on today's General Orders Calendar.
Abreu.
Aye.
Ariola.
I'd like to disclose for the record, through the Transparency Resolution, that my son works for DSNY and my grandson attends CUNY. I am a no on 242A, 279A, and 746A, and aye on all the rest. Thank you.
Aviles.
Aye.
Thank you. Ayala. Thank you. One moment. Banks.
Aye on all.
Thank you, sir. Botcher.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Brewer. Thank you. Caban.
Aye on all.
Carr.
I'd like to disclose on the record that we're funding Jewish Community Center of Staten Island in this Transparency Resolution, and I am a member of that organization, and I vote no on Introductions 242A, 279A, and 746A, and aye on the rest.
Della Rosa. Dinowitz.
Aye on all.
Feliz.
Aye on all. Congratulations, everyone.
Pardon me, I was talking to my staff. I vote aye.
Thank you. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye on all, except for Intros 742A and 279A, which I vote no.
Hudson.
Aye on all. Thank you.
Joseph.
Aye on all.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye on all.
Lewis. Thank you. Mamorato.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of 242A, 279A, and 746A. I vote no.
Marte.
I vote aye.
Mealy.
May I have consent to vote on today's land use call-ups?
Permission granted.
I vote aye on all. Thank you.
Thank you. Menon.
Aye.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
I vote aye on all, and congratulations all for the great bills.
Thank you, Councilmember. Nurse.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I just wanted to say how proud I am today to cast my vote in support of Intro 898, which will formally establish the Cypress Hills Fulton Business Improvement District. This legislation is a result of four years of really, really hard work, and it's a real rare startup in that it was founded by, truly by grassroots effort with small businesses and merchants, and I'm just really eager and excited to work together to achieve the bid's vision, to improve pedestrian safety, beautify the commercial corridor, and support local businesses in their day-to-day operations. I just want to commend the Cypress Hills Local Development Corporation, and above all, the merchants, some of whom might be here today, for their tireless efforts in reaching this milestone, and with that, I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanif.
I'd like to disclose on the record that my spouse is affiliated with the United Way of New York City, which is being funded in this Transparency Resolution.
Thank you. Ose.
Aye on all.
Palladino.
I vote aye on all, except for 242A, 279A, and Intro 746A. Thank you.
Powers. Wrestler.
Aye.
Riley.
Just want to state for the record for the Transparency Resolution that my children go to DOE school, and I wrote aye on all. Thank you.
Thank you. Salam.
Aye on all.
Salamanca.
Aye on all.
Sanchez.
I'd like to disclose on the record that my sibling works at CUNY BMCC, and I vote
Thank you. Schulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Majority Leader, I ask for permission to vote on land use items call-ups?
Permission granted.
Aye on all.
Thank you.
Ung.
Aye on all.
We'll come back. Williams.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I am so excited to vote aye on all, and I want to thank all of my colleagues for your votes, and much thanks to the bill sponsors, and again, to the staff, and also want to thank even my colleagues across the aisle who voted on, have been voting on two out of the four of the Juneteenth package.
Thank you. Juan.
Aye on all.
Aye on all, with the exception of Intros 242, 279, 898, and 906.
Thank you. Zhuang.
I vote aye on all, and also, I want to disclose on the record, my kids go to GCH Bensonhurst
Thank you. Borali.
Permission to vote on all land use call-ups?
Permission granted.
I vote aye on all, except 242A, 279A, and 746A.
Aye on all, except no on 242A, 279A, and 746A. Thank you.
Vargas.
I vote aye on all.
Speaker Adams.
All items on today's General Order calendar are adopted by a vote of 49 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 abstentions, with the exception of Introduction 242-A, which was adopted by a vote of 41 in the affirmative, 8 in the negative, and 0 abstentions, and Introduction 279-A, which was adopted by a vote of 40 in the affirmative, 9 in the negative, and 0 abstentions, and Introduction 746-A, which was adopted by a vote of 43 in the affirmative, 6 in the negative, and 0 abstentions, and Intros 898 and 906, which was adopted by 48 in the affirmative, 1 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. The revised land use call-up vote is 48 in the affirmative and 0 in the negative. Introduction and reading of bills? All bills have been referred to Finance as indicated on today's agenda. Thank you. We will now move into the discussion of resolutions, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you very much. I'm talking about 438, Landing Day. It calls on the council to recognize Landing Day every September to commemorate the 23 Sephardic Jews who arrived in 1654. They were preceded one month prior by three Ashkenazi Jews, and they formed the first Jewish community in North America. The week of September 7th, 1654, a few days before Rosh Hashanah, this group landed near the southern tip of the Dutch colony of New Amsterdam. 370 years later, New York is home to 1.6 million Jews. The landing is marked by a monument and a flagstaff, and it is placed in the Peter Menewitz Plaza by the State of New York. This year, events were held for months across New York and the U.S. to celebrate, but in decades in the past, have only been a few gatherings at the site. Ruth Methinger wrote, "It's a great resolution," and she pointed out that there were among this group that came at the time I just indicated, they were saved by being allowed to stay because a Dutch East India Company overrode the anti-Semitic position of Governor Peter Stuyvesant.
Councilmember, your time has expired.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, we will now have a voice vote on today's resolution. If you wish to vote against or abstain from today's resolution, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email or by approaching the dais. I'll now read today's resolution into the record. Resolution 438 recognizes Landing Day in the second week of September annually to commemorate the arrival of the first Jewish community in New Amsterdam in 1654, and to celebrate the continuing importance of the Jewish community in the city of New York. Will all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We will now move into general discussion. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Ariola, followed by Hudson, then Nurse.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Today, I am introducing a bill which will greatly enhance safety across this city. Intro 1015 would prohibit the wearing of ski masks in public places, thus depriving any criminal of anonymity that all too often emboldens them to act and commit crimes without the ability of identifying them. The term "ski mask" for this bill is defined as a "close-fitting garment covering the whole head and face with holes for eyes, mouth, or nose, or any combination of the three." Already, we've seen similar legislation passed by our neighbors in Philadelphia. The bills, just like the ones that are being considered in cities throughout our country, are very similar as well. Through this legislation, we can work towards making New York City a safer place for all residents. That's why I urge all my colleagues to join me in signing on to Intro 1015. I'd like to thank Pauline Sernick of the Legislative Division and my incomparable Chief of Staff, Phyllis Incevillo, for their hard work in crafting this bill. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Hudson, followed by Nurse, then Sanchez.
Thank you, and I'd like to apologize for speaking out of turn earlier. It just didn't feel right to say anything without acknowledging, first, the passing of Denzel Chan, who was killed in my district on Labor Day, along with four other people who were shot, and he was a constituent of Councilmember Lewis's, and we both attended his viewing, and so just wanted to send my condolences again to his family and friends. I'd also like to quickly highlight three of the six bills I'm introducing today. All six bills are great, but we've been here a little while, and I only have two minutes, well, just a minute and a half. Intro 1028 will require DSS to establish a system to automatically enroll eligible individuals in city benefits programs like Fair Fairs NYC by using existing records such as tax and social services data, thus eliminating the need for cumbersome applications. The second, Intro 1026, would address concerns that correction officers are canceling video visits by falsely claiming incarcerated people are rejecting the visits by requiring more detailed record-keeping for jail visits, and the bill would mandate the Department of Correction to report separately on in-person and video visits and provide more thorough explanations for any canceled visits. And third, Intro 1027 aims to reduce the dehumanization of trans and gender nonconforming people in city jails by requiring the Department of Correction to create a process for people in custody to obtain gender-affirming items like hair extensions, chest binders, prosthetics, and medical devices that support their self-identified gender. The bill also ensures that Department of Correction staff have access to these gender-affirming items and medical devices while on duty to match their own self-identified gender. It's already received a glowing endorsement from the New York Post, so you know it's a great bill, and I urge my colleagues to cosponsor... know it's a great bill, and I urge my colleagues to cosponsor these bills and the three others I've introduced today. Thank you.
Recognizing Council Member Nurse, followed by Sanchez, then Hanif.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today I'm putting forth four bills that I hope you all will consider cosponsoring. Intro 1036 calls for the Department of Correction to report on people in city custody who have been ordered to undergo a mental health exam. It's estimated that forty percent of people in custody have severe mental illnesses and we need to continue to get more accurate data in order to better address the mental health appropriately. Intro 1035 calls for a study of the potential use of lower-strength pepper sprays in DOC facilities. This is based on the Board of Correction Recommendations and this would explore how we can maintain a balance between quickly de-escalating situations while reducing harm to those with poor respiratory health. Intro 1038 would call on the city to produce a detailed master plan for developing the wastewater recovery facility and renewable energy production, storage, and distribution on Rikers Island. The recent studies show renewable Rikers is viable and now we need a concrete plan to get there. And then lastly, Intro 1037 is really a simple awareness measure to bring transparency within rent-stabilized buildings. It would require landlords who have any rent-stabilized units in their buildings to post a sign that says this building has rent-stabilized units. This bill will further empower our city's tenants and protect our rent-stabilized housing stock. Thank you for your time and hope for your support on moving these bills forward. Thank you, Majority Leader.
Thank you. Recognizing Council Member Sanchez, followed by Hanif and Narcisse.
Thank you, Majority Leader. One year ago, Nicolas Feliz Dominici made international news in the worst of ways in our community. This one-year-old baby died in his daycare following exposure to fentanyl. In his memory, I'm introducing a package of bills today that I hope you will support, and as I've become so close with this family, I speak today on their behalf to invite my colleagues and members of the public to support the Feliz Dominici family this Sunday as we remember Nicolas through a street renaming on Kingsbridge Road and Kingsbridge Terrace at 5:00 PM and a memorial mass. The bills I hope you will join me in cosponsoring are Intro 1041, which is an outreach campaign to inform parents about their rights, like the fact that you can enter a daycare at any time to see how your child is doing. Intro 1042, which requires reporting on the training for childcare inspectors. 1043, which is an outreach campaign notifying public health sanitarians and teaching staff of childcare programs on overdose prevention and reversal training. And Resolution 563, which I'm proud to have worked with my state overlapping elected officials, Senator Gustavo Rivera and Assembly Member George Alvarez, which is a bill that would develop training for childcare facility inspectors on controlled substances, educate childcare providers on overdose prevention, and increase transparency for parents. That's it. I hope you can join me. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Member. I'd like to recognize Council Members Hanif, followed by Narcisse, then Gutierrez.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Twenty-three years and one day after the September eleventh attacks, I want to honor the nearly three thousand lives tragically lost on that day. We also hold our thoughts for the over ten thousand first responders and New Yorkers who developed long-term illnesses in the aftermath of the attack. Their bravery, courage, and sacrifice remain in our hearts and memories. I want to highlight firefighter Albert A. Filosa, a Park Slope resident of seventy years who passed away from cancer caused by digging through the rubble in search of remains the days after nine eleven. I had the pleasure of co-naming Seventh Avenue and Third Street this past May in honor of his legacy. Amidst a concerning effort to marry patriotism and xenophobia in our national politics, I also feel compelled to specifically acknowledge the sixty-seven undocumented workers who were killed on that day and the nearly two thousand who assisted with recovery efforts to rebuild our city. Shamefully, these heroes have been largely excluded from subsequent aid initiatives and memorialization efforts. Immigrants have always been an integral part of New York City and America, and I reject the despicable campaign to demonize new arrivals, especially our Haitian siblings. Thank you.
I'd like to recognize Council Member Narcisse, followed by Gutierrez, then Brewer.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Today I feel compelled to address the harmful and baseless allegations being spread about Haitian immigrants, even by members of our very council member here. As a proud Haitian American, I know firsthand the pain that such lies can inflict. When I was younger, our community was wrongly blamed for the spread of AIDS, leading to bullying and discrimination. Now I fear that a new generation of Haitian-American children will face the same harmful treatment because of this dangerous rhetoric. As leaders, we must understand that what we say and share, especially on social media, has real consequences. It can deeply impact the lives of innocent people. The migrant issue is real and it demands solution. I agree totally, but using false quotes to shock hatred and division is a disservice to us all. Our words carry weight and it is our duty to use them responsibly, with the understanding that they can either unite or divide, uplift or harm. Unfortunately, the blind allegiance to party politics to often fuels with harmful discourse. Instead of addressing the real issues, some exploit fear and misinformation for political gain. This is detrimental, not only to our city, but to our nation. In this sacred week, as we commemorate the nine eleven attacks, we must remember that we are all one people. What divides us is so much smaller than what unites us. Let us rise above partisan politics and focus on lifting the standard of political discourse. Enough is enough. And I'm going to leave this with saying, may Carlos rest in peace, may my father Clotilde Desmores rest in peace. Thank you all.
Thank you, Council Member. Recognizing Council Member Gutierrez, followed by Brewer, then Aviles.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and thank you, Speaker, and to my colleagues for the early birthday wishes. Much appreciated. I want to take a few seconds to just talk to my colleagues and encourage them to sign on to a couple of bills that I'm introing today. First is the Expanding Norks Act. With over one point five million New Yorkers aged sixty-five and older, it's critical that we ensure our seniors have the resources they need to age in place comfortably, independently, and with dignity. Right now, there are only thirty-seven recognized Norks and the naturally occurring retirement communities, and the process to establish them is far too slow and next to impossible to identify and manage if there is no existing nonprofit infrastructure that can take this on. This legislation will change that, and I'm thankful to have the support of Chair Hudson and to have this bill heard this month. Next, I'm introducing a bill that brings more transparency and accountability to AI use in city government, which we deserve. This bill will create a centralized, publicly-accessible list of AI tools approved for city agencies. The goal is to enhance transparency, promote collaboration, and ensure we're using technology and our dollars responsibly. Finally, we have the Family Connect Act, which I'm proud to cosponsor with Chair Nurse and Council Member Lewis. This bill is about making it easier for families to stay connected with their loved ones who are incarcerated, many who are held without bail and have not been convicted of a crime. Right now, this can feel impossible. Families might take a day off of work, travel for hours, only to be told they can't visit their loved ones or their visit wasn't approved. This bill will create an online system for booking in-person and virtual visits. It's 2024, not at all different from the Project Cupid that OTA recently built for the city clerk's office. It's a win. I hope you can join me and sign on to these bills. Thank you very much.
Recognizing Council Member Brewer, followed by Aviles, and then Wrestler.
Thank you. I too want to say that I miss Carlos Corino. I spoke at his funeral and his sister was my maid of honor at my wedding. Also want to thank Landing Day. I didn't get a chance to. I want to thank Helena Rivera, Shuler Puder, JCRC, Manhattan Jewish History Initiative, the Jewish Labor Council, the Museum of Jewish Heritage, the Jewish Caucus, and Regina Paul from Legislative Affairs. I'm introducing something brand-new called Binding, it's called a Binding Resolution 560, and it utilizes Section 803 of the city charter to direct the Department of Investigation to assess the knowledge city government possessed on the environmental toxins produced by September eleventh attack on the World Trade Center. As you know, no administration has indicated what the city has in terms of this document. DOI would have two years to do this. I want to thank Ben Shavat of the nine eleven Health Watch from the Division Legislative, Stephanie Alley, Wes Jones, and Juanita John, and most particularly John Houston and Sam Golds from my office. Never been done. Let's hope that this is the way that we can get the information. I'm also introducing Intro 1020 regarding the Inspector General for the New York Police Department. I don't think the public even knows there is an Inspector General. The current IG was appointed in August two-three. The job had been vacant since the end of the de Blasio administration. This bill would require DOI to appoint an IG within ninety days of a vacancy. They've only issued six reports during this administration, and I can think of six things more to investigate or more, and this would require DOI to report on the number of investigations, the subject of each investigation, and a description of each incident where the police department did not give timely access to information. I hope we will sign on and take note of Section 803 of the charter. Thank you very much.
Recognizing Council Member Aviles, followed by Wrestler, then Botcher.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I just want to take a moment to say a little bit about Carlos Corino Higgins. If you didn't know Carlos, you should have. He was truly an exceptional human, something many of us strive to be. He was strong. He was a quiet force with an unwavering commitment to justice and compassion for all. Carlitos, as some of us affectionately called him, was a proud Afro-Boriqua who believed in the liberation of all people, especially the liberation of Puerto Rico. At council, he did his work with so much pride and love. This chamber will forever hold his spirit, and while filled with many people that he loved and loved him, it's always going to be something that's just not right without him. Carlos will be forever missed. He will never be forgotten. I, we, will continue to fight for justice for all people, especially the most vulnerable among us. Gracias, Carlito. Gracias to the Corino Higgins family for sharing your beloved Carlos with us. Thank you for the work you did for New York City for more than twenty years. Walk tall among the ancestors, Carlito. Gracias.
Recognizing Council Member Wrestler, followed by Botcher, then Mealy.
I just want to thank Council Member Aviles for those beautiful words and express my condolences to the friends and family and colleagues of Carlos Corino Higgins. Never easy to transition from those statements. I think as everybody in this room knows, I really love City Bike. I have taken like forty-five hundred City Bike trips. This year, the costs of City Bike have skyrocketed. There have been two price increases, and now it costs ten dollars to ride a City Bike from Greenpoint to Carol Gardens. We are introducing a bill today, and I want to thank Council Members Marte, Osay, and Hudson for cosponsoring to cap the cost of a City Bike ride to a subway fare. It shouldn't cost any more to take the subway than it should to ride a bike. It's that simple. Bike share is an essential part of the New York City transit landscape. We need to make it affordable and accessible to all. The current pricing of our bike share program fails us. I think it's a good time for us to be having a public conversation about how we can invest in the future of City Bike, ensure that the docks are connected to our electrical grid so that batteries are automatically recharging instead of hundreds of City Bike vans driving around New York City swapping out dead batteries. That makes zero sense. And in turn, for those new public investments, we should be capping the fares and making sure that the price of a subway is the same price to ride a bike, never more. Really want to ask everyone, I don't know what the number is, I'm not going to make it up, but find the City Bike Bill and please cosponsor it. Thank you.
Council Member Botcher.
I also want to add my voice mourning the loss of Carlos Corino. We worked together a few feet away from each other in the Community Outreach Unit back at the beginning of my career in 2009, and he is, it's a huge, huge loss for the council. His smile, his laugh, his great work on our behalf will be missed. Over forty thousand, over forty-three thousand people died from gun-related injuries in the United States in 2023, and gun violence has recently surpassed car accidents as the number-one cause of death for American children. I can't think of a deadlier consumer product that requires no public health messaging at the point of sale. Many, if not most, of the purchasers of the millions of guns every year, and so far this year, one point four million people have purchased firearms every month in 2024. Most, if not most, of these purchasers are likely not aware that the gun that they're bringing into their home is more likely to kill someone in the home than to be used for self-defense. So today, we're introducing for the first time in the United States, legislation that will require gun stores to display graphic imagery in addition to written warning signage that conveys the dangers of firearm ownership. The graphics could depict scenarios such as a young child reaching for a gun in an unsecured door. It'll be accompanied by warning language, and I am hopeful, and I believe, that one day, when every gun store in the United States has written warning language over the counter in those stores, we'll be able to look back today in New York City as a day that we started this effort. I want to thank Hannah Moses and Carl Wilson in my staff, Jessica Boulet at the
Council Member.
Ledge Unit, and everyone else who helped make this possible.
Thank you. Council Member Mealy.
I want to just say my condolences to the Carlos family, and if anyone know Carlos, he was like a gentle giant. We all will miss him. And I want to take a special thank you to our Speaker, Madam Speaker Adams, who have now changed four hundred and twenty seniors who at one time for seven years did not have food, and I want to just tell her thank you. The whole community salutes you. And we had our first nine eleven event yesterday that we had standing room only. We had a singer, La Rose, DJ Justice, and our very own Reverend Backus of the Mount Ali Baptist Church, and I mean, we cried and we danced, and that enhanced so many seniors. So I just want to thank the city and to thank our Madam Speaker and all Finance Department that helped us get this senior center open. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, I would like to make, put a revision into the record on today's general order calendar on Introduction 279-A, which was adopted by a vote of forty-one in the affirmative and eight in the negative with zero abstentions. I'll now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close today's stated meeting.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. I would like to associate myself with all the comments of Council Members Narcisse and Aviles, and also to, just to offer up to my colleague, Council Member Mealy, please do let the seniors know that this is what we do best for them. They're our jewels. So with that note, the stated meeting of September 12th, 2024 is hereby adjourned.